I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll open the meeting in thirty-seven and a half seconds. We have a couple additions. Do you see a grant? And stare bid awards.
Correct.
First thing on the budget.
So, this is the budget hearing as the budget can be approved of 2016-2017 budget. It was published in the paper and it also appears on our website. So this just provides the public an opportunity to comment on the work that the budget committee accomplished.
Yeah, we should open this meeting as a hearing.
Yes, please.
And yes, it's so. Now, I'll leave it open until we get a public comment.
That sounds good. And then tomorrow it will be the same thing. So allows all kinds of opportunity.
Well, while we leave it open, we go through the playground update. Is Rick gonna be here?
Rick is not gonna be here, but the school is.
So we're good for now.
So maybe I should've kept Deanna down.
Maybe we should've. We should've, could've. Story of our lives.
Go on. Then.
Mr. Chairman, the add-on, the voca grant, one-time grant. And Ann is here. We could run grab Deanna really fast and get that done between now and nine fifteen. If that would work for you.
Yeah, we could go ahead and drop down to unbind that.
Thanks. Please. Sorry for surrendering way.
And so you're not saying you're, with that post-session, you have a feeling for the hearing on budget to close at any time or do you like to keep it open?
Um, it seems like this is not a hot topic, so I don't think you need to keep it open. In protocol, if I say somebody did come in and wanna make a comment, you can reopen. We're gonna open it again tomorrow, so I can.
What's our budget adoption date again?
I have it for your regular scheduled meeting, June fifteenth. So on the Tuesday before, we'll discuss if there's any suggested changes to what was approved. And then I'll incorporate that into the resolution that would appropriate the doc on the same.
Good morning!
Good morning.
Welcome back.
That was fast.
And as far as the budget here, I'll just leave it open for a while if we need you.
Okay, I'll stay for the resolution here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What we have in front of us is the...
This is the one-time grant, the voca grant?
The voca grant at the county office, Kennedy explained.
I sure can. Um, what I received was the grant agreement to be signed. I've been working on this for a while. What it is, DOJ released a 2016-2017 one-time, non-competitive application. What it is from is fiscal year 2015. Voca had an increase which provided the opportunity to offer this one-time grant. And what the intention was, is to meet the agency and program needs that are not currently met with our regular, non-competitive. But what some of the... What it had to meet was to expand or enhance the delivery of direct services to crime victims and the health and safety of crime victims. So it had some real tough parameters that we had to meet. There was four different categories of funding: emergency services, training, technology and repair, and replacement of essential items. And then there was another. So what we... Some of the things that we first went and we got the application and was talking about it, we sat down and we really thought about what victims are missing and what we could do to help them out. And some of the ideas we had, we knew that the seniors center had the senior shuttle. And we thought we could use that to help, you know, the senior shuttle out and then help our victims from like North Lake to get down here for stuff 'cause a lot of them have transportation issues. We couldn't do that because we would send all these ideas to DOJ and they're like, yes, yes, or no. And the reason that wouldn't work out is it has to be directed at victims only to use those funds. And, you know, they pick up other people and stuff up there. So unless we had a card program or something to say they were a victim, it just wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna work out. And we were gonna give a cellphone just for the Victims Assistant Program for, well, myself to talk to the victims and talk to other folks if I was out of the office or whatever. And we could not do that because it's, it can't be an ongoing expense. It couldn't, with a cellphone obviously would be. We were gonna, we would like to help law enforcement to get some body cams. We thought that would be really good. We couldn't get all of them to, you know, do like a fifty-fifty. And that could be used 'cause you can't use the money for direct use of prosecution. So there's all these, you know, so what we did end up with was we ended up getting fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. And how that split up was five thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine and fifty cents went to training, extra training for anything related to victim. And then the video, we have a video from the victim room. I don't know how familiar you guys are with upstairs, but we have a victim room where the victims and their children and people like that can wait until they are called into the courtroom or waiting for me to be able to help them. A lot of victims, they want to know what's going on with their case, but they don't wanna be in the courtroom with their victimizer. So I spoke with other counties and a lot of them had this where it'll feed right into the victim room and so they can see the court proceedings without actually being in there. Obviously, they have to go in to testify if it goes to trial. But this would give them the opportunity to, you know, be more involved with their case with actually not being in the courtroom and making them more nervous and frightened and everything. So that, that was gonna cost a pretty penny. I've been dealing with Denise and Josh a lot to figure out how we're gonna do that. And we also had to work with the state, you know, the circuit court. So that took a lot of working around, so we finally got that. That took a lot of time. So that's what we ended up with. And I would, it was my first time really doing the grants by myself and luckily I had a lot of good help from Department of Justice. And I'd send them in and they'd bring, you got to fix this. Finally, I got to that point and I was so excited. And then, so they finally sent the grant agreement that needs all kinds of signatures from Ann and. So, do you have any questions?
We have a beer. Well, we tried for it. You mentioned shuttle lots as a normal.
Yeah, I kinda...
All of those was no bills?
All of those were not, and I just kinda, I hit the main ones. Yeah, and I put why they weren't, why you couldn't do it. Yeah, CARPEL, CARPEL's our system that we put all of our cases and everything in. And it does statistics, which I have to have for these grants. And we, we thought that we could get an upgrade or something from CARPEL that would catch better ones. But they don't, they don't have that. We thought they did, but they didn't. And then urgency lodging and that, those were not allowed for whatever reasons.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised that that works.
They... If it's anything towards prosecution or anything like that, if they're coming to testify, not allowed. What, what we do pay for is if they come for grand jury or to testify in a trial, they do get the reimbursement for mileage, but it can't come out of this grant.
Yeah. I like the video for the victim room.
I am very, very excited about that. We all are. I do too.
So reading through here, it has to be completed no later than December thirty-first of seventeen, which is a long time, it seems like to me.
It's not, and that's, it was really hard to do the grant because, like for training and stuff like that, I had to try to find stuff that's yearly in the, 'cause they have to, you know, approve it for whatever training. So that was difficult to find. And yes, it's only the work periods, January first of this year, until December thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen. So yes, we have to use it or lose it. And it was, it was kinda awkward that the work period's January first 'cause we didn't even start on this or get it until like January twenty.
So my next question, is this in the budget? Is the dollar amount in the budget?
No, but the way the voca and the criminal fine account is in the DA's budget, we're not using all of those dollars yet. We still may be okay, but we'll watch as, I think this is gonna be reimbursable, like the other voca dollars, and so when we spend it, we'll get the money back. So we'll just watch.
And compliment you on working with our IT team, Denise, because that's really important when we start talking in kind of video or anything, any extra capacity that way. And that leads me to my question is, who all gets to use this and who governs it and who keeps it from being abused?
We've had a lot, lot of talks and work 'cause some... Obviously, we can't have just anybody come in there and watch whatever. It's, what will happen is myself or Marla or Ulysses or whoever will go in to, there will be like a switch, you know, I don't know that much about technology, and they'll go into the court of court and they will be the ones to turn it on or not. We will speak with the judge and let him know. And how we'll have the camera, it will have to be right on the defendant. They can't, they're not gonna go into the room and be able, there's a lot of...
So the court's notified on our...
Oh yeah, they'll be in charge. I mean, we'll be in charge of, we would like it on right now, you know, until this time, but they will be the ones to actually push the go button. So we are working real close with Amy and, and Mr. Ben Nichols.
Yeah. I'm, I'm excited. It sounds like a very good thing for the victims.
Oh, me too, 'cause I, I really have a hard time. They always, I call them and write them letters all the time to let them know. And they're like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I wanna know, but I don't wanna be there. I don't wanna see him or her. So I think this will really, you know, increase their, they'll be more of a part of it 'cause, I mean, a lot of them don't wanna be in there and I don't blame them.
Nope. I was nervous, I informed just two slots for one official and one slot for fiscal, that's you and.
I actually have, 'cause I had no idea who would sign what. And my contact, maybe, I might have to go get it. Oh, right here, from DOJ, she lined out every exhibit and who needed to sign it for me.
Can you give me a copy of that? I have them all marked where their signatures needed, but that was...
Okay, yes, 'cause I had no idea, so please. And she did, she put exhibit, exhibit A and all through and who needed to sign. 'Cause I had no clue.
Is it urgency or should we...
Um, as soon as possible, but yeah, we could do it tomorrow.
Is that the original?
This, this is the, yes, this is the original.
And then do you want this? And your directions for whoever's gonna sign?
Yeah, it's right, it's just an email that she lined it all out.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I would like to move it here tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like it for tomorrow.
Right. Thank you!
Yeah, thank you.
That was not so painful.
No.
It's not so bad. Just here and provide.
It's nine fifteen, the time right is the playground asphalt removal update. And we have our hearing on our budget ongoing, if you want to make a comment on that. Otherwise.
I'm, I was just about to come up and give you guys a little bit of an update.
Take the chair.
I'm on the chair. Your, your family work crew, your work crew really should be commended. They came in and made us some coordination between San Dames and Rexon Avenue. And they did a really great job being conscious of our kids. They would bring the trucks in a couple days that they were in the room with the asphalt after we'd unloaded buses and safety was their utmost concern. They just did a really nice job with observing what we were doing with the kids. We did our best to pull the kids out of that recess area to make sure that everything went smoothly. They were in and out of there in a day and a half, it smoothed out and we just really appreciate the contribution to the project for you guys and the gentleman that was working there.
Thank you. I went down, looked at it, and then it has worked and it's pretty incredible how fast they were able to make that.
Rick was just so organized with his management of his crew that they were in and out of there and it was no trouble at all as far as having school continue in a normal fashion. As an update for the, for the commissioners, we've decided to do this project in two separate phases. We don't have access to hot mixed plant this summer, but we will next summer. It has our cause so much that we decided to wait on removing and putting back in smaller pieces of asphalt that we'd like to for that project. But because of your, your help and your contribution, we can go ahead and take all that asphalt out since then we is donating some topsoil and bringing that in and then we'll be able to install this, this sort of water distribution field in our community and our schools like that.
Yeah, I need to go down. Rick sent some photos last night to all of us and they sure look nice in the photos, so.
And, and we know that you got, that he has a really busy schedule and you guys have a whole list for him to get done as soon as the weather breaks. So we really appreciate you, that you're doing this.
And we pass on to you and the crew.
Yeah.
We, we visit with them a little bit.
This was the best one, wearing the belt, get in there and get it down, so it works for both, that's great.
Although Brad, I did tell him, I said, I do not wanna hold up your, your project this summer out there on West Side whatsoever. Go right ahead.
Yeah, he said it putting way behind on that project out there, so.
Yeah, he was giving it our time and then I caught my head in the other side and said, "Do not hold Rick up on this project." Are there any other questions that I can answer for you? We just really appreciate the help.
A quick question.
Sure.
I'm a strong, I know a place talking myself, back in the football days. But soccer sets a great spark and a national, it really gives kids a broader, uniformed appreciation. But you've also taken out basketball scenario. Are you gonna have a substitute basketball there also?
Well, we have a light pole. We, we pulled all the asphalt up to that light pole. So the plan is to put in a court. We've never had a court painted that had a three-point line, a full court. So we'll put a full basketball court and two hoops closer to the building. The thought is that we can light that in the summertime for kids to play after dark and have a place for them to play when we put that new asphalt in. And then they'll have two separate hoops on the backside, on the outside, for them to play a game they call bump on a regular basis. But they, this gives them the ability to be up there a little closer to the building, a little better supervision. But no, we are not bringing in our basketball hoops. So we budgeted money in there to replace that and put in some nicer hoops for them as well.
Very good.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll sit here in the back of our express line. Pretty good thanks to all of you two for your support on this and doing this forward. I've been looking at playgrounds the last twelve years and it's just a great deal of gratification for me to see it finally moving forward here today. So anyway, so my thanks.
Are you guys going to get to roll out sod? Whenever you get to the sod part, this grass part, you can all go and be...
We are. We're gonna be rolling out turf, yeah.
Wow, that would be nice.
Yeah. Hopefully, you know, probably in July that, hopefully built in enough to where we get kids on it in the fall.
Wow. Nice. Great.
AYSO puts that field through a lot of use in the spring and summer and, and fall. And so we're, you know, working with them. They've been a huge supporter of us and we them, and I think it's gonna be a wonderful thing for AYSO and get more soccer activity down there too, so.
We're hoping that when they get a little bit of space issues with our pop on our football games or teams as well, we might be able to do some sharing there and we'll kind of schedule that and see what we can do.
That's gonna be great.
Great for the community.
Yeah. I was out when they first started watching and getting a feel from Rick, he's explaining what's going on. And of course, that's part of the streets, says no vehicles past this point. So I gotta go out, had to drive out through the, the grad park. I had this one lady to give it. Go ahead.
It's a good project.
We try them that way to know who's saying why they should be...
I'm not stereotyping, but your type shouldn't be at the school apparently.
At least not him. I'll come pick up driving on the milk drive street. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much.
I'd like to go ahead and catch you on the budget resolutions.
So before you use resolution two thousand and fifteen dash sixteen, this is for the Warner Valley RFPA. Actually built this in the sixteen-seventeen budget, thinking it would catch that fiscal year, but there was materials purchased that need reimbursed now. So this is for fifteen thousand dollars from OWEB. It's to protect, help protect sage grass, but also help the communications between the county and the RFPA. So the RFPA purchased a lot of personal protection equipment.
For the record, RFPA is...
Rural Fire Protection Agency. Has a nice, really good is. And they've purchased the supplies, already started receiving them. We'll get the money from OWEB and we'll reimburse Warner Valley RFPA.
Straightforward.
And that's ran through my department because I wasn't sure where else to put it. That's where we budgeted next year, so. Thank you.
And I thought we had to close the hearing on the public budget.
Okay.
And we are happy to get tomorrow.
Yes.
Excellent. Next time, madam, is nine thirty, so how about the stair bid awards facilities? You know, this is the late, I appreciate it.
I went out for our stairs on our, uh, east wing, north, whatever you wanna call it, outside exit stairs. I went out, I tried to get three bids, virtual, uh, party. Didn't have time to do it, so I went and got, I got the other two. And I wanna award the bid to R and R and M Machinery and Fabrication, apparently. For an amount of nine thousand eighty-two ninety-four cents.
Dave, a question I should ask you a long time ago, how big are they gonna be?
Probably just one, probably just one layer of steps. It'll be about the same size. This is our first layer out here, it goes up. And then it just, and that's it, it'll go out and then end in the field. Just one, one layer of stairs, for one floor stairs, whatever you wanna call it.
And we wanted to do this so that we had, because of the words out, exposure, snow dropped through instead of bicep.
Yes, it is gonna be an expanded metal this time, the high quality, you've seen, you've seen it. And it's only for emergency and employees only, it's not public access, so.
We'll let it be framed up some of the...
So maybe still a kind of, still a kind of, that's up to the C. It'll be the expanded metal, so snow and water falling through it all. We know ice fell, but like we did there, we probably should've done that, but we didn't think that totally through on that as it was being able to allow it. And then on the timeframe, as soon as I award the bid, I'm gonna give until June twenty-fifth and complete it. For one, keep it in the budget here. And then for two, just so we're close to wrapping things up down there. That's, it might not look like it, but once they start texturing and all that, they're pretty close. Yeah, you know, they're getting closer. We just kinda want that to go in hand with each other.
Well, you had this when you got your first major approval for the remodel. You had this, you didn't have the bid that you had this included in that whole project. So this is more of a...
It's already permitted, it's already, it's all within the remodel that we got permitted and approved. That, we approved it now, it's just hitting the dollar in there.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it before us. I'm ready personally to approve it. We don't have it on tomorrow's agenda unless you wanna carry it.
I'm okay with approving.
I think times of this, it's further on the timeframe, should it be completed?
We approve the, the stair purchases presented?
I was second. I guess you made it second to approve it.
The B R and M.
B R and M. And the other... All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Lynn County, did you get any numbers?
Is she really gonna be here for the OASR?
No, she's not.
Is she gonna call me?
No, she isn't. She just gave us her explanation of what it was and recommended that we approve it.
Let's go ahead and take that on, yeah. This is easier, you don't want to conduct your explanations now.
Sure, so for Kimberly's email, it is for gambling encounter data. She said it is less, it's decreased because we hadn't done the amount of recording that we needed. She said it either didn't get entered or we weren't providing the amount of service that they had anticipated for us. So that's why it's...
Four thousand and fifty-two.
That's correct.
Did you know what the full amount was? What you meant?
That's what I'm perching for.
Yes.
You have to go back to the written agreement. It's four thousand.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
But basically, this is just an adjustment of that contract.
That is correct.
So what we are, we're, we're warning for the fiscal year going forward, that what this amendment is, is that we will accommodate services that it said reduced amount because of the services, if no documentation, the services being done.
Correct, and it's during that time period of March to June.
Yeah, she had sent us all an email explaining that they were having trouble finding any records of...
Oh, she did, okay.
Yeah, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yeah, this is an amendment to the two-year agreement. I had just detected some sort of lack of recording. We'll cover that tomorrow then. Should we... Let me watch this one here. Should we grab... Name? Okay, you will, this, this has to be.
Which one we going to, Lynn County Matt?
Dave knows, yes.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Marty.
How are you guys doing? He's not answering his phone, so.
I just had a text from Mara Norris, she won't be able to be here, but the DOCC.
Oh, okay.
Marty? Hey, give us a update on the...
Do we have time to look at some pictures?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll try to make this. Now I gotta set up the other computers. It's really a nice new...
This is the first time you've been in.
It is.
It is. Can we take like a two-minute break and we'll get this all set up?
I'll give you three minutes.
Seven.
Yes. Yep, good work.
Takes me to the next slide.
Denise will have to do it from the computer.
Okay.
No, she's got that. She'll be able to do that.
You're very familiar with our mission, but our mission for the most part is to watch council strikes to promote cooperative restoration throughout the county, working across jurisdictional boundaries to better like counties' large people and that's both the private landowners, as you know, but also the agencies and working, working together.
What was that? Previous photo.
That photo. I lost that photo.
This is a test.
This is a test. I don't know how to go through this thing.
They're over to the left of the screen.
Okay.
There's an arrow on the bottom.
There you go.
Should go backwards.
Oh, there we go. Ah, that's taken actually up near Big Valley and out in the Adele area. So, a project that we're working on for Don Robinson had some fantastic aerial photographs and using, they're using those, those droids now.
Droids, drones.
Yep, the drones, yep. Not droids, drones that are, yeah, fly over the project area so we can actually get some fantastic footage. So that's where that one's at. Yeah, so you know our five basic watershed councils from the north end of the county here to Goose Lake. So we cover everybody and now that we're an umbrella, it's the entire county and every property owner is included in that boundary. So our, our primary goals every year are to improve watershed conditions, to implement restoration projects, provide educational opportunities, fiscal management of projects. We operate all those on our own, monitor the effectiveness of our projects, watershed assessment and conduct, conducting new assessments for new landscapes and then also in our outreach. We collaborate with a lot of partners, as you know, and support working landscapes.
The monitoring effectiveness, that's something that is a must, but commonly doesn't always happen.
Correct.
But you guys do.
We do.
And tell me what you've been doing. Your projects, all of them turn out to be as you expected or even better?
I would say yes, yes and no. I think we've completed enough projects now that, you know, of course, in the last 11 years since we've been functioning kind of at a higher capacity, you're going to have some pretty phenomenal projects and even have some projects that need some tweaking. And I think we're finding out more and more that that's why the monitoring's so important is, especially with fish, with fish passage and our specific fish in this county, modification is often needed. And so that, we're really trying to show the Oregon Watership Enhancement Board that that needs to be a factor that's built into our budgets because almost every one of them needs some sort of tweaking. When you're looking at bottom swimmers and high velocities with our flashy flows, that you have to come back and really look at those factors. Is it working? Is it functioning as it should? But I think we're also at the level that we have some real show and tell projects in this county now that are kind of state of the art, especially when it comes to our high desert fishes. And so that's exciting to see some of that happening, that ODF and W and others are using some of our projects as models for elsewhere.
And we need to lack improvement, that's just the market process.
And the market process, right. And everyone is different, so they're not black and white. Yeah. See, so we've kind of identified, obviously in our county, the four primary water components we have is groundwater, major streams and creeks, alkaline saline lakes and marshes. And then some of our funding priorities that are driven by, as far as our finances go and our granting, the grant organizations that we work with are driven by basically part of a state watershed priorities, watershed condition overall. Water bowels now a large factor with the Sonic Region, the Pacific Flyway, of course wildlife habitat and fisheries. So our funding primarily comes through those sources. So whatever is kind of the riveting topic of our issue of the year or of that, that will drive the money, that'll drive the dollars and that's where we find those dollars to put on title land projects. And also save pressures with that. So we've identified some primary issues that we feel are identifiable across the entire county and that's channel instability, stream temperature, fish passage habitat, repairing vegetation and upland weeds. So those are our primary issues that we see from one end of the county to the next. So let's look at some specific projects. So these will be projects that we're working on currently or were finished last year and we'll start with Goose Lake as we work through both, you know, from part of the Goose Lake Basin all the way to Silver Lake in North Lake County. And this last year, we completed a project on Camp Creek, you know, that Thomas Creek or Bowers Creek complex has been a high priority for the Watership Councils for the last probably eight years. We've completed a lot of work clear from Goose Lake all the way to the upriver, the headwaters of Thomas Creek with just the 40 mile reach. So now we're looking at some of these tributary streams to Thomas Creek. Camp Creek, we wanted those. This was a property actually on the Anderson Ranch, a series of headcuts that was, you know, developed. It's, we just went in and stabilized and kind of reworked a good half mile section of stream. Got a lot more rock back into the stream, a lot of vegetation was planted on stream banks and we used a lot of large wood actually for stability. And the project's looking really good this year. Also, on Thomas Creek again, the Manuel Ranch, we worked through, we find a lot of this. Thomas Creek was channelized in the 1940s, a big 10 mile reach of it was. So we see these 90 degree bends in the Thomas Creek watershed and so you get these high flashy flows that hit the 90 degree bends and with that, a lot of erosion occurs. And so we've been very successful in using large wood, the juniper, to actually stabilize these stream banks. You can see here where the power line is even being affected. So the fence line, we moved that back and then we actually stabilized the stream bank. So, I think now there's been about 3,000 of stream bank that's been stabilized in the last few years on Thomas Creek. So another Thomas Creek project was actually this one, right here on the county road on Thomas Creek. This is, actually the, the point of diversion is on the Anderson Ranch, but the 70 Ranch is actually the water user. So this was the last artificial barrier on Thomas Creek that we went in and we built, actually constructed a new diversion structure for irrigation efficiency for the property owner. And with that, we provided passage and screening. So you can see there's a fish ladder here, the diversion structure and then ODF and W installed the screen here off to the side. So instead of having the, the original point of diversion right here at the bridge on the county easement, we now have it on private property, so it's going to be much easier to manage and overall should be much more efficient for the water user. And lastly, this is our last large restoration project on Thomas Creek. This project is currently funded, we constructed this year. So this is through that Cox Lab area. It's a partnership with the Forest Service, so we're completing about 12 projects, both on private and Forest Service land. And this will be basically at the end of this season, we'll be able to call Thomas Creek complete as far as all high priority, priority projects that we'll have, we've worked on since 2008. So 13 property owners now and a multitude of agency partners that have worked with us on these projects. So it's pretty exciting to get to this stage where we can actually say 40 miles of stream is much improved, so much more enhanced from what it was. We'll move on to the Drews Creek watershed on Howard Creek. We've also in the last few years worked on providing fish passage and restoration on the entire five mile stream reach. And this is now complete. This was a partnership with the Forest Service. They removed culverts on the upper reaches of Howard Creek and also decommissioned the road, completed some restoration, rehabilitation on the creek. And then we worked with Green Diamond now, who was JWTR, to remove three different culverts and provide fish passage at each of these sites where you see the perched culvert or fish camp actually move upstream. So we now have a whole new structure here. This is ended up a pretty fantastic project that we worked on and the engineer did a tremendous job. So this is what it looks like now. So we have two culverts that are now, that were undersized and perched, now have a much larger culvert that should have the longevity to maintain the road and stay in place for many years. Some small projects. Bill Albertson's been extremely active working with the Watership Council for the last few years, just doing a tremendous job. He's remarkable to me because a private property owner that puts a lot of effort into his own property. You're, you've been hearing, I know a lot about the dryland forest issues, catastrophic fire, even kind of before this all came to be in the last year as we're all collaborating with the Forest Service and US Fish and other organizations to start really addressing private land and public land together for catastrophic fire and dryland forest problems. Bill was working on this project with the Watership Council, ODF. So fantastic project of using small dollars, $10,000 to go in and really thin out his, his timber, both juniper and pine, enhance the Aspen stands. We've had two different spring development projects there for him and it looks really good. And the second phase of that project that will happen this year too, but really a great effort.
What's the acreage?
That one was about 70 acres. Yeah, so and then we'll have another, I think 50 acres that we'll look at this year. So small acres will make a big difference. That one was close to the Berry Point Fire also. So just take a look at what can be done to prevent those kind of catastrophic fire issues. This is the JV Bar Ranch or Juniper, I don't know what it's the Juniper RV Park actually. So John Shine now manages and owns this ranch. Also another property owner that is just doing tremendous things to improve his property, both for his cattle production and grazing to and irrigation to all of the natural resources. So thinning juniper, he's, spring developments in, we're doing restoration on Muddy Creek and Little Muddy Creek. So kind of a whole gamut of really great projects occurring on this property. This is actually on the Mickey Ranch or Antelope Valley Ranch and Drews Valley, a series of, with all of, I guess you've been watching for a number of years the juniper removal that's been occurring on that ranch, Antelope Valley Ranch. Beautiful property that is greatly being enhanced by removing the juniper. Well, with that, we now have some issues with a lot of water being released throughout that property. So trying to put some checks into some of these areas where there's a big release of water. Obviously this one's been in place for a kind of number of years, but throughout those meadows that you can see if you look back on that property as you drive by, huge release of water without the juniper. And so just trying to stop that water and push it out across the land and make it useful across those meadows. So we're just working with US Fish and Wildlife to spread that water and put some check structures through these gully washes just to improve.
You mentioned that US Fish Wildlife, is that related from our previous?
It is.
What's your name again?
Cassie Roder. Great partner to us, they help us on a lot of projects.
And that's through the name of that project?
We called it.
Fish Wildlife Service.
Oh, it's the Partners Program. Yeah, Partners Program, yeah. This is just a small little project at the end of Thomas Creek on Genscom's property. Just a lot of willow planting, try to get some roots back on Thomas Creek on that lower end. You know, we often work with a lot of the youth in the county. They hire the high school students to come in from different clubs, booster club or specific teams and help support their programs and they come in and do some work for us. So they did some planting projects for us this season. So the Goose Lake Stream Reconnaissance Project, this is a big effort that'll be taking place here, actually starting in about three weeks. A year ago, I wrote a grant to Oregon Watership Enhancement Board to complete a stream reconnaissance plan for Goose Lake. We really thought as a Goose Lake Fishes group and as a watershed council that in the last 10 years, we've completed a lot of work, a lot of restoration throughout the Goose Lake Basin, but we really need to start looking at what are our new priorities and how do we connect? And so this reconnaissance will actually be stream surveys that'll be completed on 100 miles of stream. It's partnership with the Forest Service as well. So the Forest Service will actually complete all the survey work on Forest Service land. And then we're working with, we've hired Clara Thomas's group through our CRI, the students, and then also River Design Group to oversee the project and write the plan. So the kids will actually complete the surveys, will collect all that information, they'll go into a really great plan that will give us, you know, maps and history and also identify potential areas where we can go and help private property owners and kind of set our whole new action plan in the Goose Lake Basin with limiting factors. So we think it'll be extremely useful, useful tool. I invited Justin Farrell with SWCD to join us on this project. So he and I have this tool to work with in the next few years and know what direction we're going with the Goose Lake Basin. So it should be done in about five weeks. We'll start the third week of June, it should be a good project. So Warner Valley Watershed. As you know, Warner sucker are the, are the primary subject of concern for the Warner Valley. Warner sucker in 20 Mile and Deep Creek and Honey Creek are the three priority areas for fish passage and screening. So again, Justin and I have been working with property owners. Justin primarily focuses on Honey Creek and I focus on Deep Creek and 20 Mile Creek. This was a project we finished a year ago, a joint project with the BLM actually on Von Robinson's place in Adele. This project has turned into kind of a state of the art project for Warner sucker, for sucker species. And it was designed specifically for those species which are very unique looking of our high and low flows and how to adjust that. So this, this is fantastic project. We've been monitoring it. ODF and W's been off the map for a year and a half, off and on, monitoring fish passing through and modifying where we need to. So a great project. We're now looking at completing everything on 20 Mile Creek within the next year. So we will also call this creek within a year. Our goal is to say that we've provided all the passageway screening needed and we can move on to something else. So we're working with the Adele water users on this project and then ODF and W and US Fish. Really working with US Fish to try to develop something called a safe harbor agreement. So that those property owners have an agreement that says, okay, we've completed, we've complied and we've worked with the Watership Council and SWCD to complete all the fish passage needed on this project that's now done. So we're currently hoping that agreement will be complete soon, very good though. So also working on Upper Deep Creek. There is above the falls, as you know, we don't have sucker above the falls, we're focusing on red band trout, but we're looking at opening up about 30 miles of fish passage through Deep Creek and also six tributaries that flow into that. We're just wrapping up a stream reconnaissance of this entire area, working with US Forest Service. They have several culverts that will need to be replaced, they're perched, it's not passable to fish. So it's an excellent partnership here that'll be happening. We're hoping to start implementing and constructing by next year, but again, a really great partnership in the county.
Now on the funding, yes, I assume that different agencies pitch in along with the OWEB.
Correct. So yeah, OWEB requires a 25% match on all their projects. So yes, so that'll be, Forest Service will be a huge match on that one. US Fish will also have some dollars in, in that project as well. So it'll be a good collaborative effort, yeah. So Crooked Creek, you've heard us talk about and I know you've seen us off there working on Crooked Creek for the last few years since 2013. We've been completing a series of projects. This was the first year with all the improvements and this is our final set of projects on Crooked Creek. So we're looking at another six property owners we're currently working with from the Simmons Ranch to the Linton Ranch, O'Connor, just a series of property owners to complete six new projects. So yeah, fish passage, the headcut stabilization and gully wash stabilization will be done actually this year with Crooked Creek. So a good project on 23 stream miles and now about 12 property owners that are involved. So also on Shewa Can, you know, there's been much work completed on the Shewa Can watershed from clear back in 2000, early 2004, 2003, with the Pagely Town where Narrows and Red House and all the passage below to the 15 miles of stream restoration occurring towards the headwaters on the Jay Spear, Murphy and ZX ranches. And now we're finally working on some of the tributaries. This is a large culvert barrier on the Uaimin property. It's about 75 feet long and it's obviously, it's the road's way up here, so it's a complicated project. It's being designed right now and we'll be constructing that project soon with another culvert replacement. This one's, it is, we would like to put a bridge in, that would be the easiest, but the cost is astronomical. So we're looking at a culvert here.
A culvert?
Yes. Yeah, a good project. So Can, I'm going to wrap this up. So we've just some more juniper cutting occurring in the upper Sy Can area, terrific property owners on one of the old, that old Bratton Ranch. So this is the, the last private property or last owner in the area and so we're doing some work for her on the Bratton Ranch. And Silver Lake, we wrapped up. Buck Creek is actually in the next year between the Watership Council and SWCD, we will have completed all the fish passageway screening projects throughout the entire, entirety of Buck Creek by next year. So the ranch is complete. There's just one barrier left and it's been funded by OWEB, we can construct it next year. And small grants, we have a series of small grants we're working on throughout the county. We try, as you know, to provide projects throughout, clear from North Lake all the way down to Goose Lake Basin, trying to hit folks with the small $10,000 projects that are just a good little, a good little effort to get some restoration on the ground. And we've been monitoring these projects. So again, this is Thomas Creek after five years. We started here. We had the juniper redevelopment and a lot of courier projects. Now this is five years later, it's looking pretty fantastic and we're starting to see your beaver move up through the system and a lot of great vegetation returning. So it's fantastic to see a few years later that make the difference. As slow growing as we are here in Lake County, also completed some assessments, we had a couple landowner workshops. This happened to be a spring development and offsite water workshop we completed, had great attendance by the property owners. And there's just some really good technologies out there now, but this was a simple task, but it helped property owners to be able to maintain or, I guess, gain the skills or ask questions about different things they could do for offsite water and spring development. And we actually did that on the ground. This was just kind of a meat pat on the back for the Watership Council between, with all the work that has occurred on Thomas Creek. A large poster was created last year and presented at AFAS, which is a large aquatic national meeting.
Right, Fishness Society.
Yes, yes, so this is important. And just to show the collaborative effort with, you know, 12, 13 property owners, you know, Forest Service and US Fish, super partners to help us get all the work completed on 40 miles of stream in Thomas Creek. Future goals, so some of our goals and issues that we're foreseeing and you know well too, and obviously drought is affecting us, water storage, we feel this is going to be something of great importance in the future for Lake County landscape scale projects, really looking on that grander scale overall, projects on the ground. And we're finding that there's definitely more political pressures coming down the pipe. And you're also aware in Lake County as far as watersheds go, I think it's been very straightforward and easiest for us to put projects on the ground and work collaboratively and we're starting to see some change there, but.
Can you elaborate on the pressure?
Definitely, I think we're seeing some more tribal pressure, much more awareness.
Pressure to do more or do less?
Just as far as getting through some of the permitting processes and just having a good relationship with the tribe so they're aware and comfortable with the projects that we're doing. I think often they were so focused on the climate of the county that we just kind of slipped under their radar that way and we're, we're very easy to work with and there's just a little, a few more hoops to jump through than before. As you know too, we're seeing issues with drought related to Lake Abert. I don't see that going away. I think that's going to continue. I think our property owners are going to have to look at contending with groups like that and outside interests. And just, I think telling our story, there's a lot of fantastic people in this county doing great work and our, telling our story is going to be very important. And I'm sure a lot of you saw the article that was written. We had a journalist come and actually do a story, Jay Spear kind of headed that up, Jay Spear Ranch. So there were some really super articles put together about all the work that the folks have done in Shewa Can. And that people really do care, there's great restoration work and we're all on the same page, we just need to move forward together. So we need to be better about telling that story, getting that word out.
Another question on water storage.
Yes.
Can you define what that is?
Not completely yet. Groundwater recharge, I think it's going to be a huge factor and we don't know a lot about it yet. It's relatively new concept for us, even though we've been hearing about it in other areas of the state and how that's going to work here. I think it's something we need to learn more about and hopefully we get some specialists here to help us kind of wrap our head around that. I think what we have to find how we move forward.
Also on the landowners, over the years, we've been at it for 11 some years, we've been finding landowners to grow in and support and willingness to participate.
Yes.
As they see their neighbors do.
I think that was really very telling for us when we started this Goose Lake Stream Reconnaissance Project, we were trying to figure out, you know, how do we contact all, but there's a lot of property owners on those 13 strings that we're looking at. We got sent out a, we decided to start with a letter to kind of explain what we were doing and they basically had an option to say yes, they wanted to practice paper, no. They would follow that up with a second letter and then phone calls. And I had only four of over 100 letters that went out and come back to say no. And they were all absentee. So everybody locally was wanting to jump on board, so I think that says a lot. Definitely not a shortage of projects, so it's pretty fantastic. We need to probably wrap this up. We're just looking at some large focused investment projects for Lake County with Oregon Watership Enhancement Board. They're looking at, OWEB is now kind of set some priorities with aquatic habitat for native fish or sage grouse, obviously for dryland forests and the Sonic Region. Those are new priorities for OWEB. So we are definitely looking at some of those big dollars, looking at large landscapes where we can ask for like a $2 million grant that can help us complete work in a series of years. So like in three years, we could complete a multitude of projects. So we have some really good action plans, for instance, like the Warner Basin where we've got a full list of projects lined out and we're ready for those large dollars to come in and help us knock them out the next couple of years. So, yeah. So a lot of accomplishments, invested over $600,000 in Lake County last year. This year we've secured 103,346 of the grant dollars that are going on the ground this year right here. So continuing to be putting local contractors to work. I feel like we have a lot of fantastic local people now that we can just go to as far as contractors and suppliers to help us complete the work that we have right in the county.
As far as giving the story out to the rest of the state, have you obtained a podcast?
We have not, no.
Have you got a contact?
Do you? It would, it would be a great idea to tell more of the story that's going on. We did complete a short video with US Fish and Wildlife last year, they asked us to as great partners. We did complete that and that was great. It was a YouTube video that went out to many, so.
Fantastic for people across the state, especially in metropolitan areas to know that people who own the land cares about the land and is doing this, good things.
Send me the link, that would be the best I can.
Couple of questions and probably a few comments. First off, it's almost by routine, you guys are doing such unbelievable work along with the partners, the landowners, the agencies. I mean, you've came to us several years now. And, and I, when I say routine, that is that you're doing such good work, that's a positive, not a negative because of our expectations are just the same here. You just come with these projects and show us it's great work. Couple of questions on your culvert replacement. Whenever you replace those perched culverts or whatever, you eliminate a holding pole for the fish because now you have. Because now you have water running straight through, what are you doing for holding pools? Especially in the low volume streams and in the fall, they become just circles and there's no holding pools for the fish to hold in.
At these specific culvert sites, what has happened is you have like a scour pool that's occurred. So yes, you have a pool there. But what happens is that it ends up eroding the stream bank on each side. So you've got these kind of scour pools with a lot of sediment. So by lowering that culvert and putting a larger culvert in, so yes, it's lower. We complete something called a stream simulated design through the middle of that. So it's a natural, looks like the natural stream flowing. And most of these streams will have other kinds of pools close by, so it's something that's considered in the design. But we don't always build those pools. ODF and W definitely have to go through their criteria for fish passage on all of these projects. So they will kind of assess that and assess our stream reach, whether we have pools or not. And most of these, like on Howard Creek, kind of have some natural, natural coolings that, that work as far as deeper holes. But the scour pools themselves are contributing to sediment and increased, you know, temperature to the stream. So if we can eliminate those and rehab those, that's going to be a good thing. With this particular project, you saw too, we also added some large wood to those scour pools. And with that, you should start getting some nice little pockets.
So you take like that big steep cut bank or not cut bank, but road that's put in 75 foot down to the culvert.
Yes.
I'm sure you guys have done everything you can, but on those cases, is there any way to do end stream work? Leave that culvert in, rehab that culvert some way and fill those pools in so that you're not, that huge cost?
It's cost, it is.
Huge cost, have to take and cut that out. And if you go with the bridge, you got ongoing cost in the future, bridge maintenance and capacity. So is there any way to go into the stream itself in the fall or whatever? Maybe set the bottom of that existing culvert out and build, I call it, planting or whatever, so you can build that fish passage up? Would that be more economical, has anybody looked at that?
Yes, in some cases, yes. So on a project like this one in particular on Elder Creek, we knew it would be very complicated. We actually had the contractor that we hired, the engineer, complete an alternatives analysis first. So he gave us basically ran through every option you could for how we can improve that site. From a rock ramp, which would be something like you're talking about, only it would be a removal of the culvert. But it would be a rock buildup where fish kind of, it gains elevation naturally and they can get up over structures and around, build elevation to gain connectivity. We looked at just baffling the culvert. And we also looked at then the bridge and we looked at the culvert removal or replacement option. Baffles just wouldn't work there, that would have been the simplest remedy. The velocity is the biggest issue at this site, extreme velocity for fish in the springtime. So we had to figure out how to slow the water down so fish can get inside of there. We couldn't even rock the inside of it, which often in the inside of these culverts will build like a two foot platform of a rock basin, build that up so you kind of have this natural course for fish to swim up that 75 feet with big rock holders inside where they can rest, find their way, just too high velocity. So we ran flow measurements, we tried a variety of things and this ended up being the most cost effective was replacing it with a culvert.
You've thought of everything.
We tried, we tried because you're right, we want to make sure we're doing the right thing and that we're using that money wisely. So alternatives analysis are one of the first things we always do on these projects. With that engineers, we're making the absolute best decision.
Well, over the years of watching and seeing everything that everybody's done as a partnership and everything, just incredible. I sat here and I thought maybe we ought to all use maybe the same slogan. And I came up with Lake County, where we make things happen.
I like that.
Just, just looking at what you guys have done, it's unbelievable for the future wildlife, for the cattle, for the forest, for every aspect of our number site all the way across. Thank you guys so much.
Appreciate it. I think it's important for us to, our message has been, because we are very different than the rest of the state. And a lot of Watership Councils come from the west side and it's different, a different thought process. And for us, the landscape are extremely important, that's what we are. And that's what we have to maintain. And we've been so fortunate in Lake County to have these tremendous property owners, landowners that want to work with us to improve their land and they truly care and they know that land better than we do. So it's that listening and building that relationship with folks that's really going to succeed. And I think we still work very well together in Lake County, you know, between the agencies and the private property owners. And sure, we have our, we all have little issues no matter where you go, but I think in Lake County, we still collaborate very well.
Well, that, that's the key thing in the environment that we have right now between the relationship between government agencies and private sector and so on and so forth. To be able to make all this come together the way that the Watership Council has. Very, very huge, it's huge.
Thank you.
I'd just add to that Marcy, that very similar thought, all, the all lands in concept and working is, is just tremendous. The collaboration, the cooperation, the cohesiveness of all of it. That's, that's the wave of the future we hope across the United States, but we're doing it here in Lake County, so.
It's exciting.
It is.
Lake County can be showcase, and there's compromise. You have to have benefit to both parties. I mean, those property owners need to benefit from these projects for sure.
Well, the resource historically didn't know the property boundaries. So, you know, the fact that we can work on these, you know, regardless if it's private or federal lands and be mindful of the fact that the resource, the watershed needs treatment regardless of whose land it's on. It's great that we have a lot of great shoots.
That's where the story needs to get out and all.
It's a great message and you're right, it's telling that story, so we need to do a better job of that.
It's almost great, unbelievable to get through all that.
It's a lot of work and a great project, a lot of good people.
Not everybody was on board at the beginning, that's for sure.
No.
Where we're at today, or where you guys are at today.
They've come around for sure.
Have you had a spring field, field tour yet?
I, we have a tour this Friday coming up, I think it's like the missions group. And I think we don't have another tour scheduled for a little bit here, but we'll, we'll get something on the calendar.
Last year's part of your education.
Thank you. Sure appreciate your time, you know, I'm far over the timeline here, so thank you. But don't ever hesitate, if you have specific, you know, issues or project areas you would like us to focus on, don't ever hesitate to let us know that. Appreciate it.
It's not that you went over, I held up because I had a phone call, the podcast was very good news. Short break while we show respect to other people. Go first, go ahead with the.
Good morning guys, good morning. Thanks for having us here. So there's some ground cover, so I'll chomp through this pretty quickly. But this graph here that folks have in the back and then you guys have there. I was bringing one of these in for your reading pleasure. The blue line is where we're at right now. So anyway, ERC, the Energy Resource Component is one of the primary indexes, indices that we use for fire dangers. So that's just showing you about what you expect coming in, that we've been about average, we got some rain, took it down to low average and now we're coming back up to average. Then we're going to get hot and that line's going to go up above that average line. I did want to, I added some extra squint leaves in there for you. So like that green line is 2015, just last year. So I guess if I, I could leave you with one thing is to know that every year is, is different from every other year. And also that throughout the year, we don't just have like a high fire danger all year. What have you, each year has its own little unique signature. So we can potentially anticipate where we go up for a period of time and, and then a bit of reprieve. So to say that we might have a high fire danger year all year, that would not be correct. Also know that that black line, average, is as an average of each day. So there, again, there's no such thing as like an average fire season. All right, next page is the drought monitor. So the top picture is just where we're at right now with drought. And as you guys well know, we are still in a drought. We had a pretty nice average winter and it was just awesome. An awesome break from the last four or five winters that we've had. And maybe at the end of this, we'll have some good news at the end of this presentation. So the monitor says we're still in drought and the outlook is going through the end of August that it will anticipate to remain in drought. And it will in fact expand once again in areas where they recently come out of drought. So the next page is a picture of the United States with a few red areas. And what that is, is a national level significant fire outlook. And it's just their big broad view snapshot of where we think we might be from very large scale, very openness. Fires of 5, 10,000 acres in scale and demand on national level resources. So they're just thinking at this point that we're going to be at average. And I don't know either. I think that we would, we would be at average, maybe an above average, if I can say for, for a season after I've told you that, so we can expect some variability. This is a month old and we're going to come out with a brand new one here in just a couple of days. But I, I made the phone call just to say that I did, that they still anticipate calling it above average type of the situation.
Clint, before you go, we've actually had a similar discussion, similar maps here a couple of weeks ago with La Niña. One of the things that we kind of talked about because the National Directors, ODF, as well as the Forest Service made these presentations. And when everything's colored in white and says normal, you know, it kind of puts people to sleep because we felt like, you know, a further explanation of normal is severe. But it doesn't paint that picture necessarily to the general public. So, you know, in some of your discussions, it'd be nice, I think, from a national level, they were seriously talking about trying to get some different kind of color in there for explanation of what normal could be is.
Sure, sure.
It could be a very bad fire season.
Sure. Yeah, I think that we need to work harder at being more nuanced with our outlook or, or other products. We do paint a very, in a broad brush and it does the industry desire to understand. So I'll say that right here and it's already been said on what to do next, Thunder. We are still experiencing drought effects here. So we've had strike fires that we've shut down because they've gotten too hot. We've got feedback from the field that our fuels are coming out of what we would have thought would, has been a great winter, but really in truth is pretty average, that our heavier fuels are drier than what we would normally think. But it is absolutely, we're still suffering the effects of drought. So let me say again, as far as what I would say vocally, that taking liberties with their map, that I would maybe perhaps cover, color our area red. And, and the fact that I think that I'm anticipating average to above average fire position. So, and then that's whatever the weather brings us, which takes me to the next page. It's red on top and green down below. And this is weather guessers staff, but three months out. So basically looking at the summer. And we're looking at above chances for above average adventures and equal chances of moisture. So pretty typical fire season. You know, we're not, definitely not expecting a reprieve from that. And then the one hopeful, I threw this a little extra in, La Niña. At this point, the, for whatever all that's worth. El Niño actually typically does not affect us. When we say that there's a strong El Niño, there's not a real good correlation to the Northwest. But it happens to be with La Niña that it does tend to have a greater chance of impacting us. So anyway, the El Niño is weakening and here is a 75% chance of La Niña to then begin to develop. And all this is, is a representation of when a, when a solid La Niña establishes itself, what it might do to impact us on a typical situation anyway. To me, that's a bigger bright outlook, trees and other wet weather, that's what that suggests.
That was past when it wasn't El Niño.
Yeah. But, and, and so it's kind of a roll of the dice. So there's just not a good signal or correlation as far as whether there's an El Niño, whether it's going to impact us or not. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. So it's kind of a blind luck type of a deal that we got a good one. But this to me suggests that maybe as far as the chances go, we went from 50/50 to maybe a 70/30 on that, that'd be a good wish.
We ran a transition that was just bringing them to be above it or below it.
You guys?
We'll know in April.
Yeah, we talked about it, you're a stretch guy. That's why these guys pulled me out here in front first, so I don't get one over on my guest. All right, thanks.
Guys, we're good?
Sure.
You know, we mentioned, go ahead, Justin. We mentioned that when we started at the federal agencies, but it's all of our fire agencies, our state forestry team is here as well.
Good morning, Victor.
Good morning.
Welcome, Mr. So didn't have much prepared, any fancy graphs or anything for you? So first we'll start with the fire season, we're going to clarify our season prior.
I'll be here. It's on you from the fresh pile.
We can talk about that. Alright, so ODF, it's going to be pretty much status quo this year, same amount of crews we normally have here. Like you, we have our seven engines, our noser, we'll have these folks back again. Did have a fair amount of turnover this year, same as experience with our crews and climate. ODF statewide, after the last couple busy fire seasons, we have ramped up our statewide aviation resources a fair amount. It's about eight Type II helicopters. Oh, about five seats, large air tanker heli tech crew. We actually are partnering with, partnering with Washington DNR this year up in the Dallas. And Clint was saying that some of the graphs and stuff, you know, in 2014, we had a pretty busy fire season around this country. Last year for ODF, we had 26 acre burn, which was an all time low for what we've been keeping records on. And so I would anticipate this year will be somewhere in the middle of that, of those two years. Pretty safe bet, I think. I think we're planning ramping up and finding for an average season.
As far as here, season, we still have a problem sustaining housing. And that's always been a challenge for us, is the housing around here. I think all the agencies here are having some issues with finance and seasonal workers, but yeah. We're working on that more civil, but it's here. That's all I really have, should we do something else?
Well, I just want to make a comment that I made to Dennis when he was here a month or so ago. And, you know, talking about the small number of acres, I think you, all of you folks that are present need to give yourself a little bit bigger pat on the back. I know it's, you're a little pen shy, you know, these events happen in multiple starts and, and the dry conditions. But I think the preparedness last year was probably as and dry conditions, but I think the preparedness last year was probably as good as I've seen it in the cooperation, working together in the actual initial attack and the activities that took place that led to these small acres. Because it could have just as easily have had 25, 50,000 acres burn had it not been for the work that was done leading up to the season and during the season. So we thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think that my opinion is that our relationships in this area are just as good or better than it's had.
Yep.
Hi, guys.
I have a bearing on it, Barry. Just want to kind of summarize where we're at for the 2016 fire season. A lot, a lot is similar, but there's a few things that are a little bit different. One change that's going to happen this summer is working with Fish and Wildlife. We're going to have their two engines work with BLM Fire Leadership this summer, and we're going to work conjunction with Fish and Wildlife and help provide more protection on the Sheldon and heart refuges. So we'll be working hand in hand. There are two engines that they have, we'll be working with our BLM engines and we'll be working like we're working. So we're pretty excited about that. So that will provide protection on the east side, just a little bit more unity and working under limitations.
Just sort of a question on that, we're partnering with them and where that the sage droughts issue has gotten so big, and does that take a higher priority whenever there's anything that happens in core habitat or even close to it, or is it, it's all the same? You just respond as the fires come in?
We, we approach that a couple ways. Number one, when we anticipate a storm coming in and we've got the indices in the desert that warrant it, we're going to bring in outside resources. You've seen the past few years how we've had engines here in town, why not? A lot of those are to provide that extra support, send those folks to those fires. But we want to give our firefighters, what we've learned from the past is, you know, putting a whole bunch of emphasis on trying to keep the fire small, and then we're going to catch the fire. Because you still need to use the tool of the desert to be able to go out far enough to where you can catch it, where the probability of success is high. So a fire may get large in the desert, but we've used a road system where we've helped stop it. And, and if, hopefully we're stopping at a smaller acre number than it could be. We're just trying to keep it super small, so. But we're using all the tools that we can, whether it's aviation, engines, heavy equipment, so definitely a hard, a heavy focus.
How much coordination are working together with the Rangeland Fire Protection Association?
We're putting an extra emphasis into the Rangeland Fire Protection Association this year. BLM has detailed a person to work extensively with those RFPAs across Eastern Oregon and Washington. And actually, that's a person right here at Lakeview who's in that detail right now. His name's Rick Myssinger. So he's working with all various RFPAs. So our RFA here at War Valley Fire Protection Association, now east, they're getting training, they're getting more communication from Brent, and we're definitely making sure that we're ready to go.
How's your communication, radio communication, is there any holding or depth scenarios for you?
Our communication is pretty good. We're still trying to get, switch over to the microwave system. We've had some fallbacks on the contract with that, whatnot, it'll be out there by the late this fall. Once we get that, we think we can start heading into a whole other era as far as you can start using detection cameras that will work to a microwave that then come down to dispatch folks, so we can start detecting in the desert and things like that. And then all across, to be, you know, using that as a tool. So Oregon Department of Forestry is already invested in that a little bit. Dennis, maybe update on that, but it's mostly, we're trying to get some energy built up there, but we've got to have the microwave system in place to help make that happen.
Who's leading the microwave? Is that Helen?
Helen is our BLM contact. We have a Foresters contact too, his name is Stan.
Have you started using drones yet?
Drones are not used yet, Forest Service, but there is a potentially some pilot opportunities out there this summer. They've talked about using them for prescribed ones. It's, it's coming along. There is some movement on that, but still, that's not a, something that you can do yet. So we've got our full complement of firefighters, both BLM, Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife. We had 253 boots on the ground on the Forest Service side, about 70 of BLM, and our two engines on the Fish and Wildlife. One thing that else is different this year is our veterans crew, Crew 7. They are going to, they're working on getting qualified for Type 1 status. So they're going to become a hot shot crew here in the future, so.
Okay.
And still keep their veteran flavor, so we'll be one of a kind and we're looking forward to that, so. They're, they're really excited and could be a really good team.
So is the funding holding okay for the veterans group?
It is. In the Northwest, we share the, the funding, as you know, with Spokane and us and Medford. It isn't what we'd like it to be. We still haven't had good luck as far as getting the money correctly to them. It has to come down and get split several ways. Some of that is Oregon/Washington's choice, but we still would like to explore of how we get more funding directly for that.
Yeah, we, we definitely continue to push for that. Those appropriations, those budget bills. And I talked to our veteran service officer last week, just on a vocal level, we were meeting with some of Congress and all, and some of our place folks, just to reemphasize the need to make sure those are fully funded crews. You know, they can go do the work that needs to be done and get the training, maybe get trained how to be able to be incorporated into the future workforce, so.
We appreciate that because it's a fantastic transition coming from the military. You get the teamwork, you get camaraderie, and then we're trying to also share that those experiences within the government where it may not be fire as their final destination. It may be fish, it may be range, it may be wildlife, you know, and we're trying to expose it to some of those things.
So Barry, as you mentioned, have we been able to work through the process of recognize, I mean, we recognize the valuable training they've received, you know, and the leadership skills that several other veterans have, but have we been able to walk that over in the qualification system to show that they have more qualifications when they come to work than, than the average beginning fire or whatever the department is presenting?
Right. So an example is, a lot of these military folks come out and they are making rent drones, no problem. That is something that they're very skilled at, they're qualified to do. And then you come in, work for the BLM or the Forest Service, and you say, well, you haven't been trained, so you're not qualified. They're trying to work on those, recognize some of the things that the military can't speed that up. And it's not just in the drone category, in spiral and explosives, it's, you know, a plant's chief, it's setting up fire camps. They, they're the best at setting up military camps and whatnot, things like that with logistics. So there's all kinds of avenues there where we, they are committed to trying to recognize those qualifications. I'm not sure where exactly that's at unless somebody else has anything to add to that.
We can locally recognize that they have that skill set, but NWCG may force us to catch them up as far as a qualification. That gap, we just need to make as narrow as possible.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bob.
I got two more points to make. In the fire business, we have two types of fire, prescribed fire and wildfire. Within wildfire, we're trying to give all of our firefighters every tool that they can to fire out safely and without giving them harm's way and whatnot. But one thing that we're excited more this season is talking about, kind of a subpart of fire is, is we want to make sure that they can manage the fire when they need to. And that is utilizing road systems, natural barriers, things like that. Sometimes we won't always be able to keep the fire at a temper danger. We may need to back off due to safety concerns or due to probability of success, things like that. Utilize a road system and, you know, some of our forest plan. So we're making that, we're making that a little more known this, this summer. We're a little bit behind as far as getting that out to public, but we're making sure that firefighters have that tool as a, as something that they can use.
So on that subject, Barry, when they didn't use the torment resource benefits in there, and the chief just issued recently a letter on life first, and we talked about safety. I don't know how the other agencies, whether it's our state, BLM, US Fish and Wildlife, are locked into the chief's directive of life first. And how many people have saw different iterations and what that means? So for our group here today, I guess I'd like to kind of approach the question on, as we talk about life first and the considerations that are going to go into making the evaluation to engage beyond the fire that's easier to manage by modifying where we put our control points. The, the thought of transfer of risk as it relates to our actions on these fires, whether it's through the line location or the life first principles that are kind of all over the place in all these several people's minds?
Yeah, so that was my second point, the slide first. What Connie was preparing to talk on. Do we want to go into that discussion or? I did, I did want to, you know, that is part of the plan for the Fremont La Niña, I'm talking Forest Service here as far as managed wildfire. But we do it on all different levels, so we do it within the BLM too, like up in the La Niña. We made a good decision a few years ago to just go ahead and put a fire all the way around that, and it didn't expose people that have to walk into those slant rocks and dangers out there. But yes, we're trying to reduce fuels across the forest, we're using it as a tool as well. And we are doing lots of prescribed burning and fire burning and whatnot on, on all the agencies. But this does give us an opportunity to, you know, do additional work out there in key places where we can prevent potentially larger wildfire futures by reducing fuels. And so what we're doing, and I want to see what Connie's saying, but some of that discussion is a stop, think, and, you know, what is our plan here? We want to look at that. We're, we're asking, you know, what is the probability of success? Is there any alternatives, things like that? And then making sure we're engaging in a plan that has a high probability to be successful, so that we're considering all those risk factors. As you know, the frog fire down on the Bodog National Forest when we had fatality down there last summer, wasn't very big when that thing, but I think it was around five acres when things got pretty wild. So things can happen pretty fast, and you just need to make sure when we go up to an initial attack fire, that we have a good plan in place, everybody knows what they're doing. And then, like I say, we need to back off and use road systems, scan rock flats, lakes, different things like that, so that we, and then we're still doing good work out on the land too. We're working hard with ODF. They've been in discussions with us on this. We know that we need to do more discussion, we need to, you know, keep moving along as far as private landowners being near some of these projects that may happen, not project the wildfires, just so that they're involved early and know what's going on.
I'll, I'll hold off on any other comments till we get to the end and I'll skip any questions and answering.
So it's all right, I'll let Connie talk a little more on life first.
Sure.
Sure.
So first of all, I just kind of want to, just kind of differentiate a little bit when we talk about the managed wildfire. So there's the, the life first engagement piece, and then there's also what we worked really hard with our managed wildfire. It is sort of the resource benefit piece that you're referring to. And so we have had quite a few discussions with our large landowners, with ODF, about could we use that as one more tool in our toolbox to treat some of these fields out there? It would be the only thing we'd want to do, obviously, but there are, there could be times and places where the ability to do that would help us treat more ground with a tool that would help us, I think, overall increase our number of acres treated. And so those are some of the conversations we've had with the private landowners. They have been pretty much on board so far, and actually, we've been talking about areas where maybe we could do something dirtling on private and federal, where there is a large fuel issue that needs to be taken care of. But we've been very cautious about saying we're going slow, we're going steady, we're going to make sure right people at the table before we do it, and that we would share the risk info about. So that is something that's on our radar, that we're hoping to take some small steps towards. And again, it's just one more tool to help us treat as many acres as possible out there in terms of fuels reduction. So that's one piece of the managed wildfire that we're talking about that you had referred to, I think, a little bit earlier. So moving into the life first, first of all, I just say, the Forest Service will continue to fight fire aggressively. That's not what life first is about. I think what happened with the agency last year, we all know we had a very tragic season, and so we just took a pause and we started to think about, you know, what is our goal? And our goal is to try to ensure that every firefighter gets home safely every day. It's a goal. It doesn't mean we're always going to reach that goal, but if we're constantly taking steps to try to move forward, then we're not doing what we need to be doing. And so that really is the chief's message about every, you know, this goal of everybody coming home every night. And so I think for us, as a, as a partnership, really the message here is that it really is a partnership, it's relationships, it's working with, with our partners in St. Bonn, with ODF, who's also partners with St. Bonn, but who represents our private landowners. And it's really thinking about what are those values at risk out there? And we do that as partners. It's what's our probability of success? So if we have some high value rangeland or high value timberland, we have different, obviously, alternatives that we can take to fight that fire. And so what's our probability of success? If it's very low and the value at risk isn't that high, you know, we might not take this aggressive approach. And that there's alternatives to doing that. But I think the key part is, and our hope, and we've been working, I think, the last couple of years, on having many conversations, especially with ODF, about we've got to be in this all together, and we've got to have those conversations upfront and really understand what those values at risk are and what it is we're trying to protect. So it's not just, you know, the Forest Service or the BLM or a single agency doing that. And so really, that's what the life first engagement conversations have been about. We've had them with all of our firefighters, we want to have them with all our partners, which are all of you, and our key stakeholders, which are all of you as well, and our private landowners. And it's really, it's really about, yeah, we're going to fight fire aggressively, but we're going to analyze our risks and our probability of success and move forward. And we share that with us.
And if we had a large fire and needed to call in out of region, larger teams, Type 1, whatever, we've got the infrastructure there to really integrate with them to transform our local emphasis.
And we've had those conversations a lot in the last two years with Frank Pittman when he was here, now with Dennis, about, you know, making sure that we have that liaison and we have and we have that input upfront in those teams that come in as we make our decisions. Does that answer your questions? Commissioner Shaw? Go ahead.
No.
Try and not be very argumentary.
I mean, I, in this day and age, and I made this comment a couple of weeks ago, I had this discussion in DC. I don't envy you all that, you know, to me, and that was the point I was trying to make there may be some differences of opinions here. We don't need to get into the nitty gritty, but you all don't need more layers of rules to engage in decisions. You have those. I don't think there's anything wrong. As a matter of fact, I wouldn't have wanted to be the chief last year. His heart was broken on many occasions, as well as families and the firefighters who were there. I think the way you're interpreting that is a little bit the way many people are starting to interpret the whole life first, separate from the strategies on when you engage and don't engage directly on a fire. But you did, you did make the comment, Connie, and most of you that received emails from me have seen the little slogan that I have on there, every acre has a value to someone. So when we're making value judgments, are we all on the same page on whether or not that's a high risk or a high value resource that's going to get burned up? Because it doesn't just have to be on private land. It can be on federal land. There's a lot of folks, publics, that believe some of the values that we wouldn't necessarily want to fight in fire view as valuable, they're very valuable to them. So how are we doing that?
Well, so that goes back to what I said earlier. I think to me, the key part is, is that partnership and that relationship and that we're at the table, especially on the large fires. So that we're, we are understanding what that value at risk is and how important it is. Because I would doubt that any of our partners or stakeholders or anybody would say, let's take a risky operation that has low probability of success and put people in harm's way for any acre. I just, I've never heard that from anybody outside the agency. But what I do hear, what I totally believe that we need to be on top of is that we all understand that every acre does have value and that we understand at that time what those values are. So as we make those decisions about alternatives and we understand the probability of success, that's just going to put us in a better position to make the decisions and the partnership that's involved with that. I mean, it will still be the agencies that will regain control, obviously, of the oversight of what those decisions are, but we would not make them in a vacuum. And I think that's what Commissioner Kessner was relating to about talking about if we have another large fire, how do we bring those liaisons and that, those voices to the table in a time that's very hectic and moving quickly? And so my belief is that we, we practice, we have those conversations often. We have worked with, with ODF in terms of our leaders intent to make sure that we're all on the same page when we hand that over to a team. And so we're doing the best we can ahead of time. Again, when we're in the kind of the hectic chaos of a situation, the more we practice and talk about it, the easier I hope it will be to make sure those voices are where they need to be.
Practice, practice, practice makes instant response. I appreciate that.
And I feel pretty confident that we'll do a good job at it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
What do you need for me?
You just had my phone.
The only thing I could mention also, just relating to what you've been asking, is we recently had a couple of border meetings. So that's a meeting where we have with our neighbors across the cross border so that we know what each other looks like, what we're talking about, what some of those interests are. We had private landowners there as well. And importantly, to have that dialogue, sort of practice a little bit. We broke that up. Team did a great job of putting that together and broke that up and sort of practiced, as you said, talking about some of those values, talking about, well, what would you do in this instance or what would you be thinking about? And like I say, practice makes a big difference, but those relationships are what really solidify it, really bring, bring about that trust. And we've recently had some really excellent exercises. So that's the only thing I would contribute. Team did a great job.
Can I add something for the Sheldon fire side? I'm Andrew Taylor. I'm the new FFO. Betsy Shink took off last fall for the BLM in Sacramento. Our main theme is we just got a lot of change in our organization with that interagency agreement with the BLM and fire staff. Another big part of that is we pretty much got rid of our prescribed fuel specialists and we got a joint split 50-50 with the BLM and that position got higher than March. And that person's been doing a really good job, at least from our end, doing a lot of work for us. So our main thing is, you know, just change in our, our organization, especially on the fish and wildlife side. We're going to see how it goes. It's going to take a lot of communication and talking and working together, but we did that pretty good anyway. So we'll see how it goes. But that fuels was another big part of that, that helped both of us out, I'd say, in the long run. Other than that, Barry, we covered most of the stuff. We got our two engines this year will be out on part of Sheldon and working out of town here as needed and helping them out at Third Guard Station or wherever we need to.
Got this little saying that cooperation is, is a good thing. Collaboration is a good thing. Integration is the next step, where we get agencies kind of integrated each other so that they share without any solos in between. I figure that progress in that direction.
I'll just add too, from my perspective, that's exactly what we did. When Betsy Shank left, we had the opportunity to look at our organization. We talked to BLM, Forest Service, Mary's shop. We wanted to integrate our folks in as best we could. So we've done a formal agreement, we're moving money to them. We've removed positions off our org chart, transferred parts of those to BLM and supervision of our engines will be directed under them. So it's one desert team, if you will, and we maintain our FFO with Drew. So I think it's going to work real well, contributing benefit all the way around.
So the last thing, just always remind folks that when that integration occurred, there's two most important things, that being people and the resource and those, those haven't changed at all. In fact, I think it's a better service, better resource cover and our folks, folks have very good service and they're taking well care of us. So just want to point that out.
So I've got a question. You get the updates and they're great updates and quiz all of you, but what can we do as a board commissioners to help you and your mission and your work? Probably not.
I'll jump in. I'll jump in, sure.
I know you're going to.
So one of the best things that you can do for us, and I don't, I certainly don't want to speak for all of us, but I think we all are, have some of this in mind is we do the best we can to communicate with the public and to reach out to them and to understand the interests and to explain to them the technical or the difficulty in fighting a fire. And no matter what you do, when, when people see a fire, when the alarm goes off and they see firefighters over here and they see a fire here, and they say, so why aren't you attacking it? Why aren't you right there in front of it? And so just communicating with the public, helping us to communicate with the public that we're doing this carefully. We're doing this with strategery. We're doing this, taking into mind those interests, taking into mind life first, taking into mind every, consideration for every life out there. And that's got to be our first and foremost message. But helping the public to understand how we're approaching this and we're doing this carefully as we can with as much consideration as possible is, is a tremendous thing that you can help us do because in many times, many terms, you're our conduit. People will come to you with a complaint or will come to you with a question. And we are open to, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I know that we're open to questions. We're open to explaining some of these things, but people are busy and have other things that they're doing. But in the fire world, if you could just help us to reach the right people to explain things, that would, that's most helpful. Connie?
So two things. One would be, well, three, one, BLM is covered. Secondly, I think if we did have another big event or we get into the managed wildfire much, is your ability to help us bring those voices to the, to the table quickly in the event of, of a larger wildfire. Because we, we practice, but we haven't really done it well yet. And so you three are very key to us because you hear, you know what's going on, you have the ability to help us get that input to the table. So that'd be one. And then the third thing would be what you're already doing is just you have the ability to lobby a bit that we don't have, to really try to get, help get the story across about the need for fuels treatment and the need for restoration work and the resources that we need to do that. We talked about the regulations that we go through and we do. We don't need extra layers, exactly like you had mentioned, Commissioner Shaw. And I would just appreciate that message continually going forward that we're spending millions and millions on wildfire suppression and such a fraction of that on actually taking care of the problem.
I need a brief message, Sean.
Well, I think what you guys are saying, especially that part, is really important. Because right now, as we've all seen what happened in Arnie County, I think when the event happens here, we need to be unified and get out there as fast as we can. Because it doesn't matter if it's the local government or if it's a federal agency, there's an anti-government sentiment out there. So I think showing the support both ways is very important. I think that's really important. The other thing that you guys have mentioned today, I heard, high value timberlands. Now we have the sage grouse, high value BLM lands. All those public lands have always held very high value. Our pill payment doesn't reflect the mine value, but to us, it's very high value and what everybody does out there to protect those lands. I don't know that the public really realizes, you know, we hear 26 acres from Department of Forestry, you know, last year, the initial attack, everything. Everybody does really, really good work out there to protect those public lands for all of us. So I don't know how we put out more PR, more things, but there's a lot of good work done out there by all the agencies and the private side also. And now the, well, what's it called, the other group of firefighters just going to be working out there in the corner of the valley. I mean, everything's starting to come together a whole bunch. There needs to be as much publicity as we can with the good things that's happening out there. I believe in life first. That's literally the same as what you guys are doing. There's an inherent risk whenever it comes to what you guys do, but a lot of good work out there. Thank you, guys.
I would just add, Commissioner Shaw, that you continue your work on a national scale. You represent us and the community and you bring a voice that's very valuable, I think, for folks to hear.
Thanks, John. You should have heard my soapbox speech to Connie's leadership. Yeah, we're committed. We, for lack of a better term, we believe, I mean, we really do, that we have your back. And that's why it's ultimately important for us to communicate with you and you with us so that we're, we're able to support you in the way you need to be supported for the actions you take day in, day out.
I'd just say, you know, this is my thought there, in the event of a large fire, we want to engage you guys early. We want to get those stakeholder meetings happening right off the bat. And I think you guys will be a key piece of that, you know, to make sure you're ready and be active with those stakeholders. Yes, that's, and then Bob and I, with, you know, Connie and Elin and John, we talked about those, we value those very highly. And we have some lessons learned from that. And we want to make sure that we hit that right off the bat so that we truly understand the advice and we get to hear all that and then we get to prioritize.
I applaud you, Barry. You know, those discussions were fresh after the last big fire, remain unnamed or unspoke about, but the fact that we're four or five years down the road and we're talking that way is, is very complimentary very much because that will go a long ways, not just in the communication, but in some of the decisions that are made. Because we always say, you know, those that are on the land, a lot of times have that local knowledge. A lot of us, you know, lived here forever and a day, but at the same time, those that are actually out there every day, that's going to go a long ways towards the decisions that are made by the, the teams that are in place and the direction they get. So very good.
I would just also say, I've been a white officer in many counties and I do believe what you said, you say you have our backs. I really feel that's the case in Lake Hanning. You'll let us know when you're not happy and that's good about something and, but, but you're always there to, I think, support us and know that we do have a difficult job sometimes. So I really appreciate that. I'm all.
Connie, I'll, I'll just throw one other thing real quick to your point. And I just tried to make a joke out of my jokes. My wife says, anytime you have to explain them, then they're probably not real good jokes. But my day at the Whitley meeting two weeks ago, by the end of the day, because we have your back, I felt like I made a lot of people upset. So on Tuesday, I spent all day on the hill. And the first meeting I had was with Congressman Walden. And I said, you know what, Congressman? I think I know what it's like to be a congressman. Because yesterday, I made everybody I came in contact with mad at me. So even at that level, we're not afraid to, to talk about what needs to be talked about on behalf of all of you.
I'd like to come back to it with you.
So just a couple of things for me. Number, number one, Barry hit on the technology piece and the possibility of getting some detection cameras up. ODF has budgeted for the next fiscal, the ability to start making that happen. And we're really looking to partner with all of the partners to, to help build out a good detection camera system in South Central Oregon. So we're excited about that, that piece. One of the other things that I'm, I think we'll be doing is automated video location trackers on, on resources throughout the South Central Oregon area, which will more readily identify the closest forces in the event of a fire. So I'm pretty excited about that piece as well. To the life first comments, Dan, I picked up your nervousness on the interpretation of that in, in different levels. And I too, that's the exact kind of feeling I had about it is originally, it's the nervousness on, on how, how we were going to interpret that. From an ODF perspective, part of first and foremost objective for the Klamath Lake District is that everybody comes home. So it's not a new concept. However, it, I do believe that it's something that just needs to be said, certainly after last year. I mean, we need, it's, it's a good reminder for folks that we need to, we need to take a second look at the situation, analyze it, you know, do we, do we really need to do this? You know, in, in our minds, there's always, there's always something to do on a fire. It may not be attacking the head or the flanks or, or what have you, but there's, there's something to do there and we're going to, we're going to keep doing that and adjust as the, as the fire goes on. But I, I do believe that the life first message in, in South Central Oregon at least is a good one and I think we're all on the same page when it comes to that interpretation here locally. So that's a very positive thing. And as to the, you know, that conversation along with the utilizing fire in the toolbox or utilizing some different methods for fire in the toolbox and possibly enhance resources or what have you, we've had several of those conversations locally. Those are difficult conversations to have. The good news is we're having. So, you know, there's, there was a time when those conversations just, just wouldn't happen. And so that's a very positive step, I believe. And I, I think we're in a very good spot locally. And I definitely echo what Connie and Elin had to say about your support, your commissioner support. We thank you for that. We have the same issues that you. We have the same issues that Elin alluded to. A lot of times, we're, we're maybe not good at patting ourselves on the back and showing what we do. We like to do a good job. We want to do a good job. And if we're doing a good job, that's just what we expect that we're going to do. So patting ourselves on the back is pretty tough. And a lot of times with the, with the anti-government sentiment, we're not going to get it to everybody. And they are going to come to you, and that's okay. And if you can help us out with that, we certainly appreciate it.
It's basically three federations, one state agency, the local government. We all need to be the same community. Thank you, guys, all. Shannon?
We have one more thing we'd like to...
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Keep this going. Too much longer. We've got a lot of time, but just want to take a few minutes of your time to illustrate another landscape effort that's ongoing here in the, in the area. So last year, out of the Officer Wildland Fire, under the Fuels Management, some of the, some funds were redirected, and specifically some fuels funds, to provide some opportunities for landscape resource work. And one of the, or several of the things their objective were to focus on place-based partnerships, looking at collaboration between fire management and resource management, where they wanted to achieve and sustain wildland fire resiliency across priority landscapes. And we took the opportunity to look at the Great Basin landscape, the small part of it, and the importance of it to sage grubs. Just to try and showcase and look at our opportunity to bring some of those fuels dollars here. Overall, the objective of that program is to look at broad land health outcomes in a fire-adapted system. So we're talking about wildland fire resilient landscapes. We're not talking exclusive, you know, fire exclusion. That's still an important part of the toolbox, as Connie alluded to before. So looking at fuels management, resource management, merging that with fire management, and how can we best manage our systems. So last year, they had a pilot program to deliver $10 million out of Officer Wildland Fire. And then 10 collaboratives submitted proposals. Ours, called the Greater Sheldon and Hart Wildland Fire Resilient Collaborative, submitted a proposal, and we were one of the 10 selected. So it was very good. It wasn't equitably distributed, $10 million. We received almost, we asked for $6 million and received, I believe...
3.9.
3.9. So $4 million of the 10 approximately came to this, to this collaborative itself. Specifically, our collaborative included five under recipients, the BLM Lakeview, Sheldon Hart Mountain National Wildlife Refuge Complex. I'm a partner with Fish and Wildlife Service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Marcy Trader to that part of our program as well, who can find ways to put those resource dollars on the ground in the private lands. We, the part of the program also included Summit Lake Pai tribe in Nevada, just south of Sheldon, and the Great Basin Landscape Conservation Quadrant, which is provided for some land, planning opportunities within the collaborative. So really quickly, identifying what resilient characteristics are. What was OWF, or what were they looking for? And looking at the ability of the landscape to absorb the effects of large wildfires. It's not, like I said, excluding wildfires, but how can the landscape rebound after an impact of that nature? So areas potentially would have low, we're looking for areas with lower invasive, high natives. Looking at valued resources that are high risk from wildfire. So specifically, our collaborative looked at the impacts to sage grubs and, you know, with the effects of a 100,000-plus acre wildfire. So how, within the, within the purview of that opportunity, can you manage wildfire size? You're looking at implementing fire breaks, maintaining natives, or even looking at specifically here, how can you improve the upland health and maintain viable weapon habitats within that system? So the collaborative, so when they were looking for places to invest these, these dollars, our specific collaborative covers almost 4 million acres. But I want to point out that that's flexible. That's the first iteration, and we're looking at other additional opportunities. And one, landscape work is, is fluid over time, including many partners. The more partners we have in, the more collaborative, and maybe even more integration. As you talked to Ken before, we can do better work on the ground. But this one right now, three states, specifically looking at really important greater sage grubs areas or BLM districts. So it's pretty sizable in its, in its infancy right now. I believe it's just the beginning. Quickly about how much we received, almost $4 million, of which $3 million went to BLM and Fish and Wildlife Service. And where did those dollars go? Since we have such a short term, we were looking at, where are our quick, low-hanging fruit? Where can we get our biggest bang out of this investment on the ground? And we invested it in the juniper management removal on the ground. So a large, we followed the BLM to set up, this stuff is very good. And we've been working with them to help assess and look at, where can we remove these juniper in the landscape and get the greatest return on that investment for sage grubs or under sage species? So almost, in its entirety, almost, I know all of Fish and Wildlife Service dollars and I suspect all of the BLM dollars on the ground. That's good. Also, the private lands program, I talked about that. How can we tie in or integrate a private land piece, which is very, very important, because that's where most of the weapons parks, weapons parks, and occurred within this landscape? So we want to invest in the private land work and make those opportunities available to those private landowners as well. Summit Lake Pai tribe, looking, they're looking at tying the Sheldon, the southwest, southeast part of Sheldon, in and out. Some education management on the Summit Lake Pai tribe as well. They wanted to take advantage of opportunities to invest in their resources. The last part of that is landscape planning. It's, it's easy to start to, to look at individualistically within your own jurisdictional boundaries, what your plans are, follow your plans, CCPs, RMPs, strategic plans that the state has. But how, what mechanisms do we have to start to look across these boundaries? And how can we start to tie these concepts and implement these concepts together? So planning is, is as much fun as we all like to do it. This is a necessary component in working across these boundaries. How can we start to get the greatest return on this investment? So we want to make sure to invest in that planning portion of the, of the RLC as well. So that's the background. Where are we at today? We're quickly trying to submit pre-proposals for 2017 through 2019 funding. That's just been released. We need to submit that by the end of the week. So we're quickly trying to get more partners involved. For instance, the Watership Council, we just, that Marcy was kind enough to talk about. We were happy to listen enough. Those are important pieces of the puzzle we want to continue to bring in. Other states, that might be an opportunity, California, the northeast California, RCDs, things like that. How can we better strengthen the collaborative to do some work on the ground?
Shannon, I was going to make a quick comment. When you're doing that, I really encourage you to use the term cohesive strategy in, in your planning process. That's what will, will really resonate with those that are reviewing these plans because you're doing it, right? The principles of the strategy, you all are doing it. Marcy, when she spoke to all the different partners, the collaborative partnerships, that's what it is. But the buzzword, for lack of a better term, is very important to call out what it really is in this day and age when it comes to getting priority funding taken care of. The National Cohesive Strategy, okay? Please do.
It will shortly be a miscreant proposal.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Do that. Two more things. We're preparing to host our first Wildland Fire RLC meeting, June 28. And we'll host that here at the, at the Ella Hill. And that will be one of those opportunities where the invitees, the attendees can, actually, we can finally start to see where people are implementing these types of projects across the landscape. So we can get a good visual of how we can start to connect these dots. And that planning effort will help us, help us do a better job on the ground. That's June 28, at the Interagency Office. BLM has been kind enough to host that. So you expect there's going to be as many as 50 members, but who knows? The summertime's kind of hard when different people are together. We attended to host it in January, but other things were going on. Nor could us that caused us to delay that temporarily. Nonetheless, we're going to host that, and we're very much looking forward to some folks coming in and finally showing what they're doing on the ground. The last part of that is we were made aware last week that Chris Sari, this is a long, a long, Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary for Policy Management and Budget at DLI will be here tentatively June 16. We were made aware that it's likely she's going to give us all the data. And her focus is to look specifically at Resilient Landscapes Collaboratives and to have an opportunity to talk to active and potential members to get on the ground, to actually see how we implement it and use those dollars in our future plans. And now, we're creating an agenda at this time, which we would be made aware that's going to be developed by tomorrow. So I invite all of you and encourage you to attend at least the morning session at the Interagency.
So, just to give you another heads up.
Yes.
In that discussion, I think we're all aware that Chris was kind. She's one of our two co-chairs of the National Wildlife Committee. I would include that verbiage in cohesive strategy. Just if, you know, whether you're looking at projects that follow those principles, it'll go a long ways. I know what this is a national broadcaster needs, so I hope she's not going to be watching this. The crux is, is that it will really resonate with her if you're talking that language. And we can follow up later on some points about it.
It's June 16 and June 28, correct? Like an intermittent, any, I can say it count. Please, yeah, feel free to ask all any specific questions. Oops, that's reading it sound. All right, any questions?
Well, the landscape collaborative is fair and fair. The landscape doesn't recognize jurisdictional boundaries. And we feel to interact and be on one team across the landscape. If it helps on you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your work. Please get to some. Stick around for that. Tell me, guys?
You're learning something new.
Thanks, man. We see you. Some, but our personal elements off, you'll know the weekend following. So, yeah. Okay. That's good. Very good. Thanks again. But it's a great chance.
Five minutes. You should call it right on. It was good. You're pretty good, love it.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
It is a big effort. And you've known for years.
So.
We're active. A lot of the folks here are trying to make things together. Small steps over a long period of time can make a change. I'm trying to.
Well, I like it, Sean.
Yes, I would do.
Keep up the good work.
Have a good day.
Okay.
Just want to make sure before I make it.
The county by Lake County Community Health update. I had a text from Mira that she won't be able to make it today.
So we'll continue that another time.
Yeah. We have Dave and Larry here on proposal for training and support.
So as you know, we have a newly elected assessor on January 1st. And Larry, as a result, has taken another job in the DOWs. What county is that?
Wasco.
Wasco, yeah. Looks like a good opportunity for him. Transitions are always hard, especially when you've got a department head with, you know, that requires a lot of skill and knowledge. And we are in a fortunate position to have Larry be willing to help train Dave over the next several months. So what this proposal is, is Larry would come back on Fridays and Saturdays and spend those days training Dave. And we would pay him at his, an equivalent to his current rate of pay and help him, compensate him for his fuel for the round trip at a hundred dollars a trip. He's listed all the things that he's going to accomplish there, but anyway, that's the gist of the proposal.
Just, I support it. I appreciate Larry's willingness to do that. Dave's accepting of that, working together on behalf of the better we can appreciate that more than I could possibly say. I think the proposal is fair.
We'll get it done. Coming out on Saturdays, Dave won't come in on Saturdays, looking at two days a week. We'll get the tax roll done and I'll be able to give him as much that I can of everything else. We don't work like a refund today, how to do a refund. There's steps to our programming and things like that, the whole process. So I think for two days a week, we'll get tax roll out and get as much other training as we can.
As you conveyed to me last week, that's your emphasis is to help Dave in the transition for the county.
Absolutely. So he's gonna have three more to go. So, yeah.
So really, time is of this and should act on this. So today would be the day to act. Before I make a motion, I'd like to just say a couple of things. Congratulations to Dave for, congratulations to Lake County for the years of service that Larry's put in, not only as just an employee, as an elected official. Larry, your time has been served well here and we appreciate that. It shows your commitment to Lake County to not only offer to do this, but to sit side by side with the person taking the position and help keep Lake County and our taxpayers whole. That is very commendable. And Dave, for you to accept that, this is very commendable. That is what Lake County is about and we appreciate that. Talking with Jay and talking with, he talked to our legal counsel. The appropriate way to do this would be to accept the resignation. He said that that's the appropriate date. At the same time, we would be appointing Dave to that position. So if.
Or Larry's last day would be June 17th. So end of that day, he would resign.
If the board's good with that, I'd like to go ahead and format that motion and get that taken care of because we don't have another reason. Or we'd have to have a special man write at that time. And with that said, Larry, you're acceptable for that to go on before today, exactly the way this is written. So I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation from Larry Reader effective at the end of the day, June 17th, as presented.
Our second motion. Motion is to accept the resignation at the end of the business day of June 17th. Any other discussion? Paul, I.
I'd like to make a motion to, to appoint Dave and Old to the position as Lake County Assessor effective. I guess that would be June 18th as the new Lake County Assessor.
Our second motion. Motion is to appoint Dave as the new assessor at June 18th. And that to serve the remaining calendar year, okay, become county assessor also, like the Board of General. Paul, I.
I would like to make a motion to accept Larry's offer to continue service during the transition period at the same rate of pay until mutually agreed upon a longer need of services at this time.
Our second, any discussions? This angle, Larry's status would be temporary part-time employee. And that's the same rate of pay that's on a four-day basis.
Yeah. Reflective of what's shown in here, but if we put it as the same rate of pay, then if they mutually agree that one weekend, they only need to be here on a Friday, or if they need to just do twice a month, they'll mutually agree upon that. Is that acceptable to both of you?
Yeah.
That's sort of what we discussed. I probably should explain that a little.
Yeah.
Discussion, thoughts, comments? In the poll, I.
I.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, we also have a lot of business. Denise, did you agenda?
They have it.
Lane County, I G A, map maintenance.
You will notify everybody from the state, everybody that's real one, you know, so you can try and design something.
Thank you. Do you need any discussion on this agreement with Lane County, which we've contracted in the past?
For the benefit of our public, that's on, can give a brief about the agreement is.
Lane County takes care of our G I S mapping. They take care of our path system, which is our computers program system. They do our, take care of our format mapping for us. And this is a continuation of the same contract that we had with no changes. Do our cryptography work. That eliminates a position here and it brings a lot of expertise and also licensing and the fees are all included in this. They discharge hourly rate as per needed. So we don't have a lot of work going on. We don't have a lot of expense going on. So this is just a continuing agreement between the.
Continuation of what we've done in the past, more or less, right?
It's correct. This is exactly, very efficiently, no changes.
We don't have the infrastructure of the G I S mechanism, so we contracted with Lane County, its own.
We used to contract with the state. And then they started having budget cuts and their service wasn't real good, especially in the smaller counties. And then Lane County decided, well, we've got the expertise, we've got the people here who wants to contract with us. We've done that. And we budget 15,000 a year for the partitions and lot line adjustments or subdivisions, whatever the public needs. And they do all that mapping for us and we get it back, update our program. So it's worked really well.
I'll make a motion that we approve Lane County I G A, map maintenance.
This is my agenda for tomorrow. It's not tight up.
Oh, it is. Yep. Sorry about that.
We have to drag that towards rock. Jenny, you don't have to be here.
Work session, just kind of go over stuff and then drive them in, get to something to do too. Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, that's covered everything. Like I mentioned, the E O C C O Community Advisory Committee and membership. Mira will not be here today, so we'll, we'll wait till we schedule that for another day. So, latest update?
Well, due to the lateness, I was gonna give a pretty hearty update about my travels back to DC, but I will defer that since we have an executive session at 1:00.
I got a couple. I'll try to make them pretty quick. Link our Schmink Museum, we're moving forward, I believe, let both of you know already, but public, everybody else know that the state D A R is in support of the transfer of the Schmink Museum to the counties was one step further down the process. Myself, Denise, Dave Berman's been getting some quotes for everything from carpet to some building maintenance, deferred building maintenance to a heating slash drilling system. I'm getting quotes to the state D A R that they should build leverage and funds to take care of before it's transferred to the county ownership, which is very positive for us for traditional being. So that's moving forward. We'd still love to see the July 1st date. It has to all go through the Attorney General, through the attorney, through all the attorneys. So it's in the process. It still could happen, but very positive. Other thing, Connect Oregon, the super act, we ended up, speak about a couple of our projects, the airport project, Hill number three, and that was our number one, and our local act is number three at our super act, which is right there, should be pretty much funded. The Red Rock, I disabled out of 16 at the regional, at the super act. Of the 16 projects, I say we'll keep it maintained, number nine, and the Clamath Airport at number eight. They did not want us to vary from the ranking in order that the local act caused me some anxiety. I disagreed with them because of both those projects have advanced from the time of application. I'm questioning their process, the stage process to find out what exactly the matrix is of how they score. The super, super act means that it's part of where they come out in the matrix. They score higher as far as getting funding. And I believe it would be appropriate if more information comes in to vary from what the local act is. So this year wasn't able to. I will be at the final act in Portland and will go set the table because conflict of interest, the Jupiter will be there and I'll be the junior lobby and I can on the side. So felt okay, not as good as I'd like to be where we ended, but a lot of support, even at the super act level, it's just, it's hard to get the modes to rank these projects up as high as they need to when they're competing with the Portland area.
So Commissioner, when you were saying, you know, trying to get the changes at the super act, but our local act, I am still highly, I know you are too disappointed in our process. I mean, it just.
Well, the process, and good point, Dan, is at the end of the super act meeting, I asked for two things, a white paper that will show what the process needs to be done at the act level. In the process is you take your number one project to the top, no matter what the budget is. We follow, we chased the dollars. We brought tier two projects up above tier one projects. We brought two tier, tier two projects above tier one. To get that funded, when it gets to the final act, we probably will drop the tier two, I argued every way I could, the reason why we moved them up. And so the white paper needs to explain to our local acts, is you bring your best projects forward, you look at the ranking, the, for example, the Red Rock scored an 80, 80 or an 82. The next closest one was the Clamath Airport in 75. And they're reversed in ranking, plus they went down below two tier two projects. Even during the act time, I mentioned we shouldn't chase the dollars, we should go with the best projects, even myself start, start chasing them. Other thing I asked for is that acts need to, to, for this next legislative session, I'll have to try to follow up on this, is ask the legislate, legislation to be put in there that our code of money in our region, that we make the decision on where that goes. It shouldn't just end up in the whole slot and we're guaranteed, in this case, 4.5 million for the projects in region four. I would like at the super act for us to be able to say, these are the projects that we want to take out that four and a half million and at the region level, make that decision. Instead of getting in the big table, the big room, and people saying, well, you've reached your 4.5 million, so you're cut off. I don't care if it's issues, Clamath or Lake County or Lower John Day, if we know a project's really good, our super act should be able to say, that's one we want to have funded. And we have the skills at the table to do that. So I'd like to see legislation to show that. And then that other pot of money, let's go to the big table, let's have that discussion. Real fast, I said that's gonna be fast. The other thing, as everybody knows, we went out for our F P for mental health, Lake County Mental Health. Seems to be some interest out there, I believe, we want to get some people respond to that. Denise, myself, Jay are still working together to pull the advisory committee together. Tomorrow's their normal meeting. Denise is going to put out an email for us to move that to next Wednesday because of, I'll be in Fort Rock tomorrow. We want the mental health advisory group there to help solidify the whole compositions and bring that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to have him appointed so that they can review this R F P, make recommendations when we get to that point. Still working on the mental health side of the things. While we're talking to us, and I'll stop with my fast.
I haven't had time to thank you about many of the ladies on that day. Sunday, there's a grant application we put in for U T S A, USDA. We haven't heard anything back, but I had a gentleman that fits for a tour on Sunday up plus Adele. He's interested in, he's helping, if we should get that grant. Very promising, I'm glad.
We should know June 15th.
The other aspect, both are going to be at Fort Rock tomorrow. In turn, there's a Veterans Advisory Council meeting in Cape Falls in the morning. And with some concerns with the delivery of some services, I might, would you exist? Would you get that handled?
We will handle that. No, you can't. So I'll probably go to Cape Falls and I won't be at Fort Rock tomorrow. I'll get my, I must do the, uh, girl, uh, stores. She always likes seeing me there.
We will.
Anything else for the good of your? Then at 11:53. Recession. Wait, recess. We have an executive session at 1:00.
Thank you, Commissioner.